Mr. Raligan?
Yes.
Um, I did tell this. I went to, uh...
Very good. How are you?
I'm having a creative one.
Good.
I grew grass there. It was shady. Eight pounds sixty dollars.
I started a franchise over in Cincinnati. That was nowhere near some twenty years ago. Yeah. Fifty trucks now. They do dog removal services, dog PC removal services. He comes in and he'll spray the yard with fluids. He'll get this stuff. He's disinfected, so it smells good.
Sure.
All that kind of stuff. Very...
That's it.
Three ordinances tonight. I know you're excited.
Are you still...
Get in. That's... You get as much as you can physically just run.
Yeah.
You'll see the dirt and the grass fly up behind you.
Or able to stay.
And then once you do that...
That's right.
I'm gonna do that one first.
Shady in two spots, up front, shady in the opening. I'll be able to grow grass there. The area under the shade. Because there's no way that is so delicate.
Yeah. And then just... Because you can only... I think it's one time you pay for that. And it only takes thirty percent of that season. So again, you have to have a root.
Yeah, I know. That's... I put some...
So, pre- and fast use. Pre- and red fast use is what grows here. That's the only thing I can see. That's the... But there is a weekend called the Pingle. Um, it's a juvenile. It's a legal law.
I have six o'clock. Ready? Call or council meeting for March the eighth. If everyone would stand for the pledge.
Let's leave this group live. That the United States of America, due to republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, blessed decisions of this body, guide us tonight and the future as well. Amen.
Come here, real call.
Mr. Stengel?
Here.
Mr. Ravellette?
Here.
Mr. McNeese?
Here.
Mr. Lau?
Here.
Mr. Gornell?
Present.
Mr. Grove?
Here.
Mr. Salters?
Here.
Mayor Yocum?
Here.
Adoption of the agenda?
Uh, make a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll second.
Got a motion by President Salter, sent by Vice President Grove to adopt the agenda as presented.
Question.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Gornell?
Yes.
Mr. McNeese?
Yes.
Mr. Ravellette?
Yes.
Mr. Lau?
Yes.
Mr. Stengel?
Yep.
Mr. Salters?
Yes.
And by a vote of seven to zero, the agenda is adopted. Need approval of the February twenty-second minutes?
Uh, make a motion to approve the February twenty-seventh minutes.
Second.
Motion by President Salter, sent by Vice President Grove to approve the minutes as presented.
Question.
Mr. Stengel?
Yes.
Mr. Salters?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Gornell?
Yes.
Mr. Lau?
Yes.
Mr. McNeese?
Yes.
Mr. Ravellette?
Yes.
And by a vote of seven to zero, those are approved. Patitions, memorials, remonstrances? Being then committee chair reports?
The Public Safety Committee met last February twenty-fifth here at City Hall with several of the Vincennes firefighters to discuss the possibility of a firefighter's merit system. Um, meeting went real well. Um, we had great discussion. I, um, I invited, uh, Mr. Howard Hatcher over to, uh, speak because he remembers what the police department was like before a merit system. He also remembered what it was like trying to get a merit system from the police department and what it was like afterwards. He was on there a long time. Um, he had, uh, he had some great stories that he shared with us. Um, after he spoke, uh, we took an old, um, city ordinance that was rolled up, uh, a few years ago. I don't know how many years ago it was. I think two thousand seventeen or something like that. And, um, we went line by line with the firefighters, uh, getting their opinion on what they would like, what they didn't like, what they'd want to keep or change. And after making all the notes that night, uh, we forward that to Mr. Raligan, uh, to, uh, type up into a, um, ordinance form. And, uh, after he's finished with that, we may have another meeting very soon. And, uh, that's all I have. Thank you.
Uh, I can give an update on Area Plan Commission. We had a meeting last Tuesday. Some of you were in attendance personally and on Zoom. A lot of that business that we did is in our new business, uh, today, uh, on our agenda. Uh, some of the other things that were done was, um, uh, solar, uh, farm approval, uh, at least conditionally on, based on some other things that need to take place. You guys, anytime you want to be on Area Plan Commission, you let me know. But, uh, no, I know you feel that way about a couple of other ones. No, Area Plan did a nice job. It was just a long, healthy discussion. Um, and it's, and it, and it went through. Uh, I think that our, our, I voted in favor of it. I, I will tell you that I think our county is going to be better off having, having this i- in it. And then also, this is, uh, the direction that things are going to be heading. And it adds to the overall tax base of our community, the assessed valuation. And I think I got a commissioner or councilman here that may agree with me on that. So, um, anyway, that was it. Area Plan was fun. We, and we're going to have a bunch in here, uh, today as well.
Yeah, and Councilman McNeese, we want to thank you for those back-to-back three-plus-hour meetings on that. Um, and a lot of the complaints where people said they weren't in the loop. I don't feel like we, as a council, have been out of the loop because you have kept us in the loop basically, uh, the whole time through this process. And we do appreciate that and...
Thank you.
Uh, keeping the city interest in mind. Um, solid waste, our solid waste meeting got moved up a week, um, for our committee. And we'll be discussing, um, uh, the service, the rate increase that we've already discussed, that the councils agreed on, the county councils agreed on, the commissioners agreed on, uh, mayor's agreed on. Like, everybody's on board for this. Um, so the public hearing's been out. That meeting will be next week. Uh, we'll get that done, um, and start that process. So, um, that's where we're on the update. The big question last week was when we were going to have that meeting so we can get this done. So, uh, we'll get that, and then in our next meeting, we'll update you and let you know that it went through.
We do have, um, Parks and Public Space Meeting. This will be this Wednesday at six PM here in, uh, in the chamber. Okay, no other reports, reported city officers? Okay, public comment? No public comment. We will go to old business. First up is Ordinance Three, twenty twenty-one. An ordinance of Vincennes Common Council, Vincennes, Indiana, amending the zoning of real estate in Vincennes, Knox County, Indiana, at the intersection of Hart and Eleventh. Your first reading was February eighth.
All right, make a motion to read and approve Ordinance Three, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Got a motion by President Salter, sent by Vice President Grove to have the second reading of Ordinance Three, twenty twenty-one.
Ordinance number three, twenty twenty-one. An ordinance of the Vincennes Common Council amending the zoning of real estate in Vincennes, Knox County, Indiana. The four parcels there, the Eleventh and Hart, going from, uh, R-one to C-one for a new business to go in there.
Any discussion?
So quickly, this was before Area Plan Commission. It was ratified by them, approved. Uh, ten-zero, we have a ten-person board. Uh, it was ten, yeah. Ten-zero, uh, and to bring it back to council. Uh, again, this is on the intersection of, uh, Hart and Eleventh. And I think that, uh, we've all maybe even assumed it was commercial for a long time. It was even, I, I found out later, it was even advertised by some real estate agents as commercial space, but it wasn't that technically. So, uh, I hope that we approve this.
Any other discussion?
Question.
Mr. Lau?
Yes.
Mr. Salters?
Yes.
Mr. McNeese?
Yes.
Mr. Gornell?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Stengel?
Yes.
Mr. Ravellette?
Yes.
And by, by a vote of seven to zero, second reading of Ordinance Three, twenty twenty-one passes.
All right, make a motion for third and final reading on Ordinance Three, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Motion by President Salter, sent by Vice President Grove to have third and final reading of Ordinance Three, twenty twenty-one.
Ordinance number three, twenty twenty-one. An ordinance of the Vincennes Common Council amending the zoning of real estate in Vincennes. These four lots are going from residential one to s- commercial one, uh, for development. This was also, the zoning was contingent on the new owners taking over. So, if this passes...
Yeah.
The land will transfer and then the business will get started.
Okay. Again, discussion.
Question.
Mr. Ravellette?
Yes.
Mr. Stengel?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Gornell?
Yes.
Mr. McNeese?
Yes.
Mr. Salters?
Yes.
Mr. Lau?
Yes.
And by a vote of seven to zero, third and final reading of Ordinance Three, twenty twenty-one passes. Next up is Ordinance Four, twenty twenty-one. An ordinance of Vincennes Common Council, Vincennes, Indiana, amending the zoning of real estate in Vincennes, Knox County, Indiana. It's four twenty-one North Seventh Street. Your first reading was February eighth.
Make a motion to read and approve Ordinance Four, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Motion by President Salter, sent by Vice President Grove to have second reading of Ordinance Four, twenty twenty-one.
Ordinance number four, twenty twenty-one. An ordinance of Vincennes Common Council changing the zoning of real estate. This is the mirror image of the last one. This is going from C-one. The business is closed and it's going to be, um, turned back into a residence, so it will go to R-two.
Discussion?
Again, the Area Plan Commission voted unanimously to, um, in favor of this zoning change. They did with a slight note that there was a piece of property in twenty eighteen behind it, which would have been, uh, I think Dick Teague's house. It was actually, uh, commercial at one time that got changed into residential as well. That was the only note they wanted to do. And they, they actually recommended at that time that this be brought into that. So, that's it.
Any other discussion?
Question.
Mr. Stengel?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Lau?
Yes.
Mr. Ravellette?
Yes.
Mr. Salters?
Yes.
Mr. Gornell?
Yes.
Mr. McNeese?
Yes.
And by a vote of seven to zero, second reading of Ordinance Four, twenty twenty-one passes.
Uh, make a motion for third and final reading of Ordinance Four, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Motion by President Salter, sent by Vice President Grove to have third and final reading of Ordinance Four, twenty twenty-one.
Ordinance number four, twenty twenty-one. An ordinance of Vincennes Common Council changing the zoning of certain real estate in Knox County, City of Vincennes, going, uh, containing sections one, two, and three, from C-one to R-two.
Again, discussion.
Question.
Mr. McNeese?
Yes.
Mr. Gornell?
Yes.
Mr. Salters?
Yes.
Mr. Ravellette?
Yes.
Mr. Lau?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Stengel?
Yes.
And by a vote of seven to zero, third and final reading of Ordinance Four, twenty twenty-one passes. Next is Ordinance Five, twenty twenty-one. An ordinance adopting amendments to the Knox County zoning ordinance, Broadway Place subdivision. Your first reading was February twenty-second.
Make a motion to read and approve Ordinance Five, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Motion by President Salter, sent by Vice President Grove to have second reading of Ordinance Five, twenty twenty-one.
Ordinance number five, twenty twenty-one. An ordinance adopting amendments to the Knox County zoning ordinance. This is a series of real estate that has various zoning from C-two, R-one, and R-two. And this ordinance contains three sections and they're requesting that they go into a planned unit development zoning, which is a little different for us.
Discussion?
Quickly, again, Area Plan Commission voted unanimously for this. They did do an explanation of the planned unit development, uh, to, uh, ensure, uh, the depth. It could meet the depth requirement that the zoning ordinance has of a hundred and twenty feet. This would allow that to be lessened over time. I think that the, the discussion was further in, like all the other, um, exceptions or requirements out there, based on area versus a width and a depth. I think that's what the Area Plan Commission will choose to move forward in the future, so.
And this is one of the projects that we've talked about for a little bit. And I think this is one to get really excited about. Kind of, we're going to see a lot of stuff like this happen. Um, and this is kind of the tip of the spear here.
Supported by the RDC and the mayor.
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is everybody getting on board. Everybody excited about, this is the stuff that we want to see encouraged in the community. Um, and it's nice to be able to see these projects now. Instead of just talking about it, these are coming to fruition. So, uh, we're very excited about this.
We have, uh, Steve and Mark on Zoom. Do you guys have anything you want to add or any questions for him or?
I don't have, I don't have anything significant to add. I'd just like to second the moment that this is a project to get excited about it and hope that, that we can continue these type of projects and provide housing in and, and redevelop or, or redevelopment in, in neighborhood areas. And thank you for your support on this project.
Okay.
How many units are you planning to put there, Steve? Do you know right now?
Twelve or thirteen. It's in there.
Can't hear me.
Yeah.
Somebody else know?
Yeah.
Steve, the head of councilman wanted to know how many houses were going to be built in this subdivision?
Uh, there will be thirteen homes constructed in this subdivision.
Thank you.
Hey, any other discussion?
Question.
Okay. Mr. Lau?
Yes.
Mr. Salters?
Yes.
Mr. McNeese?
Yes.
Mr. Gornell?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Stengel?
Yes.
Mr. Ravellette?
Yes.
And by a vote of seven to zero, second reading of Ordinance Five, twenty twenty-one passes.
Uh, make a motion to have third and final reading on Ordinance Five, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Got a motion by President Salter, sent by Vice President Grove to have third and final reading of Ordinance Five, twenty twenty-one.
Ordinance number five, twenty twenty-one. An ordinance adopting amendments to the Knox County zoning ordinance, uh, changing the zoning from C-two, R-one, and R-two to variously zoned sections one, two, and three, creating a planned unit development zoning designation.
Again, discussion.
Question.
Mr. Stengel?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Lau?
Yes.
Mr. Ravellette?
Yes.
Mr. Salters?
Yes.
Mr. Gornell?
Yes.
Mr. McNeese?
Yes.
And by a vote of seven to zero, the third and final reading of Ordinance Five, twenty twenty-one passes. Move on to, uh, business updates.
Okay, this is a really great time to be talking to our local businesses because things are going extremely well. And obviously, one of the big things that we've got going on is the, uh, gift card giveaway. That's just been a huge, huge hit. The key thing that we wanted to do was bring that focus into our local businesses, and I think that we've done that. Um, and I thank Councilman Ravellette for kind of spearheading that. And I have asked him to start putting plans together for something in the future. Uh, we don't know what dates, what we're working on, but...
Right.
Yeah, this has been extremely well-received by the community, and we want this to continue. Um, with that being said, I mean, it's going to be something that we're going to continue to preach. You know, buy local, take care of our local businesses. Um, they're getting in good spots again. And we've seen great things happen here. And if you want to compare it to other counties and other cities around us, we're in a very good spot. Um, and that just means we just keep focusing. Uh, we keep supporting each other. And I think that's why we're in such a good position is because we have taken care of each other and we've looked out for each other and we wanted to help. So, business in Vincennes and Knox County, I mean, things are going great. I mean, we're seeing expansions and investments all over the place, and it's a lot to be excited about.
Yeah, I'm planning to work with Jamie Neal at the, uh, Merton, not Merton, it's what's his name? Chamber of Commerce, right? Because I know they'll probably have a, some kind of a, uh, Christmas promotion. And ours might be before that as kind of a back-to-school promotion. So, we just keep, keep it snowballing.
Yeah, and that's a nice thing. Like, we worried about that this first quarter.
Yeah.
And, you know, we've made it through this first quarter with some pretty good numbers. So, we're going to keep pushing.
Yeah.
And that's what we're going to keep doing. So, business in Vincennes is going great.
And with that, we still have seventy-five thousand left in our, uh, business COVID dollars that we can, uh, distribute if businesses want to, to, uh, apply then get a whole share in my office to...
And we want them to apply.
Yes.
Uh, next up is county metrics.
Um, our numbers are really, really, really good. Uh, today, we had zero new cases for the third day in a row. I can't really even think to when we had numbers like that. Uh, our trend has been downward. If you do the statistics and the equation for the week, our numbers this Wednesday are going to be very good as well. Uh, so we're looking at a third week in blue, which, you know, is going to be great. Not just, you know, for us, but if you look at the map, southern Indiana is basically blue. There's a couple areas, I mean, maybe a fourth Indiana is in yellow. Indiana's doing really well. They're one of the top in vaccination distributions. And then you look at us, we're one of the top counties in vaccination distribution in Indiana. So, things are going extremely well. And what you're starting to see now, uh, people talking about events. I know the mayor and I have always said, we wanted to keep our schools open, businesses open, and now we want to see our events return. And we're kind of in that phase now. We want them to return safely. We feel good. I guess the big push right now is when you get your opportunity to get your vaccination, get your vaccination.
Absolutely. And keep up the good work with the mask and...
Yeah, I mean, everybody's doing a great job.
We'll stay in the blue as long as everybody keeps up with what we're doing. Don't let it, don't, don't, don't let our guard down. Okay, we'll move to new business, uh, invasive species update. Commissioner TJ Brink.
Uh, so I invited, uh, Commissioner Brink, you can come on up. I invited Commissioner Brink to come. Um, we had some, obviously, some issues with the invasive species ordinance. Some of the local businesses did reach out. I know they reached out to Councilman Grove about, uh, some of the issues that they had with it. I did reach out to Commissioner Brink, um, and our other commissioners about some of the things that we, uh, would like to see changed, some things that would help us, especially the business community here, um, in the city of Vincennes, so...
So, these are, these are changes that have been enacted and are in place?
Yes, these are the ones that were, yes, these are the ones that were, um, voted upon in our last meeting. Mr. Salters, I have your copy here.
Okay, it's fine.
Uh, so amended ordinance for our eleven dash twenty eighteen. And this is the ordinance prohibiting the sale and planting of certain invasive species, uh, within Knox County. The changes, if you'd go to page two, starts there, there are three changes that were made. First one is, uh, highlighted for you, the, uh, prohibition of sale of invasive plants in Knox County. Should not apply as long as the plants are planted by the vendor outside of Knox County, Indiana. The vendor must keep a record of such plants being stored on a customer job order at the storage location and must also tag the plants, plants with a customer name and job number. This record and tag must be available to the, uh, county invasive species officer for inspection. So, you can have them, just make sure we tag them so we know that's being sold outside of the county of Indiana, uh, outside of Knox County.
The key issue, this was the, one of the biggest issues, if not the biggest issue in the ordinance, correct?
Correct. This is one of the ones that personally, I, I want to speak for myself, but I heard from the most about is, uh, y- you're handcuffing the businesses within Knox County, doing business outside of Knox County. Knox County is the only county in the state of Indiana that has additional, uh, plants on the invasive species list outside of, of the state of Indiana. Uh, so we could not even sell to a Davies County, even though it's legal there. Um, the second one is on page three. Uh, board appointments, the initial term of the five members, uh, staggered. First one's one year, two years, three years, four years, and then five years. Originally, it was five years, uh, for everybody. It's now down to a three-year. Uh, so the term for all appointments are three years or until a replacement is appointed. Uh, so we lowered that down to a three-year board appointment instead of five.
And they're all staggered as well?
Yes, they are staggered as well. Uh, I skipped on page two, I'm sorry, uh, section four point two. The term point of sale within this ordinance shall mean the location where the plants are retailed. So, it kind of goes back up to what we just talked about in phase one. But the biggest change, uh, in, in my opinion, is the fact that you, and I don't want to name a certain place, although...
Right.
Yeah, don't do that.
Tim's Nursery can have the plant, sell the plant as long as Tim's Nursery is selling it outside of the county of Knox County.
TJ, can I ask a specific question about that? Can they sell, so somebody from Lawrence County, Davies County, or somebody comes to here in Knox County? They can't sell it here in Knox County. It has to be sold outside the county. It can't just be sold to somebody from another area that moves in or comes in here. Say, somebody from Washington comes over here and wants to go to X, Y, Z place. They can't buy those plants here in Knox County.
No.
Okay.
We, we, it would have to be a job-specific, I believe, is what the intent is on this.
Okay.
Um, but again, i- as long as we are marking that plant as job-specific to be a Davies County plant.
Sure.
Um, and, and of course, I'm, I'm very much aware, yes, we would love to see all ninety-two counties go to the same model. That would be wonderful. Um, and so that we don't get into this situation. Uh, but we're not there. Uh, Knox County is the only one in the state that has additional plants added to the state list.
I was going to say, there is a state standard.
Yes, there is a state list.
And in the, in the two years, no other county has followed our lead on...
Not since twenty eighteen that I'm aware of. And I've asked that question. Ryan, you could probably answer that a whole lot better than I can.
Yeah, there, there's not another county out there that's doing what we're doing now.
Yeah.
At all. It, it makes it very di- again, uh, nurseries, landscapers, it makes it very difficult to do business. Um, especially, you know, if we're looking at growing plants and doing things, you know, it, it just makes it difficult. We've got, we've got counties that specifically grow plants, and that's their business. That's their, that's their portion of agriculture.
Right.
So, by doing this, you know, if everybody followed, we would, we would tie our hands at that and be, you know, that would be pretty tough.
Right.
Well, that's the key thing why we reached out to you all as commissioners is because a majority of the places that were affected are within the city. Um, and so...
Yes.
You know, with this being a county board and us not having representation on that board, our direct representation is you commissioners. Um, obviously, one of the big things I, I, and you know this, that I wanted to see a city person on that board so we have more city representation on that. But, um, these improvements do help, and it helped alleviate a big issue that we had. And where we saw most of the complaints and most of the business owners coming to us and then us relaying that information to you as commissioners.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate you coming in.
Okay, we'll move on to claims.
All right, the claims need to be updated, correct?
Correct.
All right, um, so the, um, the new amount needs to be seventy-six thousand seventeen dollars and forty-nine cents. Uh, if you just make a note of that in your packet, Kathy's got the information, uh, on that. And with that, uh, being said, I make a motion to pay the amended amount, uh, seventy-six thousand seventeen dollars and forty-nine cents.
I'll second.
Got a motion by President Salter, sent by Vice President Grove to pay the claims in the amount of seventy-six thousand seventeen dollars and forty-nine cents. Any discussion on claims?
Question?
Mr. Ravellette?
Yes.
Mr. Gornau?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Lau?
Yes.
Mr. McNeese?
Yes.
Mr. Salters?
Yes.
Mr. Stangle?
Yes.
And by a vote of seven to zero, the claims will be paid. Uh move on to miscellaneous.
All right, I got a couple of cleanup things. Uh I was reached out to by the United Way who's paying for the Wall Bash Valley Connect, and I'll probably have them come and discuss this. Uh they do have a grant to pay for this, but they would like to kind of keep this and extend it, and while we're curious about our interest on paying a portion of this. Now, this will be at the end of the year, so we've got plenty of time to look into this and do our research. They've got the funds to be able to do it now, but the more people they can get involved, the longer they can stretch this out, the more interest they can uh get going. Uh the website's gone live, from what the United Way has told me, the library, uh Good Sam, the ones that are using it regularly. It's been a very good resource tool uh for the city of Vinsons, for Knox County, and basically for the service area that we're in, which is our surrounding counties as well. So I'll have them come in. I just want that on your radar. Um so Mark Hill will come in and discuss it because United Way is leading the charge on this. Um and we might have uh Gary Hackney come in and discuss this too. Obviously, he came and pitched it to us before the pandemic. Uh but I just wanted that on everybody's radar as we move forward, uh because that's a possibility for us to look into if it's something we want to invest in. Um moving forward too, I, I would assume here within the month, you know, the next couple of weeks, we don't know when it is, but eventually uh we know the executive order will lapse, so the question is, uh obviously, we've used Zoom a couple of times for our ability to have people come in and meet, um and I just probably need clarification from our attorney that once the executive order does go, we can no longer vote from Zoom. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, so I've got no issue with having our council be on a Zoom call, talking. I've got no, I mean, because we've got a public forum, it's fine. We've got people that come in if they can't, uh but just knowing as we move forward, when that executive order does pass, if you do decide to Zoom, you're not gonna be able to vote.
I don't think that you can become a president either.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, just there. So like, I mean, and obviously, for the biggest one is not being able to vote.
So would that be an extension?
No, you just, you just wouldn't be there.
Basically a.
You just wouldn't be there, and we'd be like, I mean, yeah, and we could just say, hey, we're gonna put your words into the comments and things like that, so. Uh just wanted everybody aware of that moving forward, because I, I mean, these are the discussions that we've got to start having and thinking as we move forward with that. Um I know um we've got a couple of discussions about H R thirteen eighty-one. Obviously, we haven't really said anything about it, but the key thing is, I know the commissioners came out against it, um and then you had forty, mid-forties, come out maybe more. Uh the key thing in discussions that the mayor and I have had, uh it, it's kind of vague right now what it is. There's bad legislation that happens, and when there's something that's going to be detrimental to the city of Vinsons, you'll, we'll make our statement. We don't need to make a resolution or anything, because if it's bad, we'll tell you, and we'll let you know that it's bad. Um the big issue here for us is there's just a lot of gray, and it's not really uh giving the cities and the localities uh more of a say, but it's still in the works, so we really don't even know what we're looking at there. So that's, people have asked us some questions on that. I just want to let you know where it's at. Um obviously, if the, you know, it comes to a final thing and we need to make a statement, we will make a statement, and we've done that before, and we will continue to do that when we see bad legislation that affects the city of Vinsons in a poor way. Uh and the final thing for miscellaneous, I've asked Steve Beeman to come to our next meeting to kind of give us a timeline on Rainbow Beach, and he's gonna go over everything uh for that, because I know that each one of you are getting questions on that, because that seems to be the big topic as temperatures are warming up and we start to closely move towards the summertime. So he'll be here to take our questions, kind of let us know what's going, the process that's working up to that. I know a lot of people are excited about Rainbow Beach, so uh we want to get all the proper information out there, the correct information out there, and let everybody know that we're excited about Rainbow Beach.
Okay, we'll move on to public comment. And then uh we'll move to for the good of the order.
All right, it's the favorite point of the meeting. Councilman Grove, are you ready?
I thought we were doing this in reverse tonight, but yeah.
I've got mine. I'd like, I'd like leaving Councilman McNeese towards the end. He's writing things down as we go. Everybody takes his, and then he complains about it to me afterwards.
I was excited the weekend. We, we had a chance to walk down on the River Walk and the Memorial Grounds, and I was just amazed at the number of people out and about uh on the grounds and the park down there on the River Walk. Um that was definitely a highlight of this week. And then uh walking by Pub and Grub, I see they're back open after a remodel, so again, more investment in downtown. Um heard that, that's it.
Okay. District two?
Uh shout out to Vinsons, uh to the Street and Sanitation Department. Seen a lot of potholes being filled. Uh that was encouraging. Helps especially for the motorists around town, breaking wheels and things like that. Speaking of businesses reopening, uh talked to the manager of, uh he was up on the roof. I didn't go up on the roof, but we talked. But uh China Buffet, he hopes to, on Sixth Street. He hopes to open uh within a month. He's got some outside things to work on, and um he's really optimistic about that. Um in the uh, the neighborhood north of, of uh Second Street, I was going through there, and I saw what appeared, my interpretation, looked like uh sheltered, uh enclosed bus stops uh for, or, you know, some, someone catching an Uber or the bus. And so I talked to the Vinsons Housing Authority guys and, you know, asked them about it. They go, oh, no, those are uh smoke stations. It's like, oh, okay, they, they look like bus stops, but they said, uh what I thought was great about, they uh, they partner with the, the, I love how businesses partner together or the city or the organization like that, but they asked the guy that has the build the benches and the swings next to Charlie's Carmelcorn. He built the wooden benches that are inside there, and the guys from uh Vinsons Housing Authority over the winter constructed them, and then they poured the concrete when it was uh warming up and put out, uh there's eight brand-new ones. Uh actually, one of them, they said, does face the street, so it could be used as a bus stop, but um that was exciting. And then um new business, probably the best well-known secret in Vinsons along that Washington Avenue, and it really doesn't face Washington Avenue. It's that, where that intersection and the railroad crossing is, but eleven oh five Washington Avenue, eleven oh three, one three five seven and nine, there's a, it's called Vinsons Cheap Store, and believe me, everything in there is cheap. Actually, they offer free bread, uh name-brand bread. It's a guy that's buying overstocks and things that are damaged and uh from Pepsi, anywhere from Pepsi-Cola to Little Debbie's, and he's got two other businesses in there doing uh gaming accessories, and another one has comic books. So I, I spent some time with them and just, you know, told them, appreciate them, kind of bringing a little life to that little corner there. That building on the backside of it is Beeman's uh used furniture, so it was encouraging to, you know, somebody uh doing that and get, you know, stepping into business. And uh I mean, it was, there was, there's a lot of stuff in there, so if you really want cheap groceries and free bread, check it out. That's all I have.
Councilman Stangle?
Thank you, Tim. Um Friday, I seen the uh pothole patrol out, just as Ed mentioned, and uh they were doing a pretty good job filling potholes. I want to men, also mention that if you ha- see a pothole needs filled anywhere around your house, as you're driving or walking, um you can get on vinsons.org. There's a link on there. Just click on that link. There's a little form you fill out, and hopefully, they get to that in a timely manner. They're pretty busy guys, I know that. While walking in a park this morning, I, I seen the uh Duke trucks over fixing a light. There's a, there was a, a light pole that had broke. I think it was just some damage down on the base, so maybe some water damage. But uh it was um, one of the park employees told me that uh it was quite amazing how quick the uh Duke Energy guys got there to take care of that, take that down. Uh I think it was kind of a, a risk there, but it was, the park employee did have it taped off. Um also, while there, I noticed the street department uh was removing a tree that was on the east side of the park. I think it'd been there for a little while, um but um it's all gone now, and that's all I have.
All right, district four, Councilman Ravellette?
Very excited about uh a new business opening last Wednesday in Vinsons. That's the uh Helms Orthodontic Service. They're on Ford Road, and their hours, this is not a commercial, but their hours are eight to five on Wednesdays and eight, eight to one on Fridays.
It, it sounds like a commercial. That's the voice I hear in a commercial.
I don't get anything for that, believe me. But also, I, I'm very happy that we passed ordinance five tonight as well, because the new uh Broadway Place subdivision is in district four.
Absolutely.
That's all I have. That's enough.
All right, Councilman Lau?
All right. Uh yeah, it, exciting times as we get a little warmer out, and uh boy, the park and uh uh all the, the city areas and open spots out there uh being used. Uh it's good to see people getting out, stretching their legs, uh out walking dogs, and just really getting a lot of exercise and just enjoying the city, so I'm grateful for that. In district five, we, we don't often have a lot of new businesses pop up because we're a lot of residential, but we do have a, a new business put a sign up. They're coming that way. That's Midwest Glass, so uh we're excited, district five, to see uh new businesses pop up. And, and, and especially in this time, you know, bringing in a business, that's great. We, we love that. We uh really do appreciate that as a city and uh look forward to having them there.
Councilman McNeese?
Gosh, do I get to steal it from you? Before area plan commission, uh we had a number of things. One, uh all this zoning that was going on is all good things inside the city of Vinsons. Um Levin and Heart, Leavith and Heart, that's a new business that's gonna be built in our community. Uh Broadway Place, new, new houses. The other one's taking one back to a residential neighborhood, which is exactly what we want more of sometimes. And then uh Tim, the, the big one, of course, before area plan commission was a, was about Culvers. And, and on the old uh executive end spot, a nationally recognized business is gonna be moving in, and property's been sold. Uh some of the questions that are around that, of course, there's big pipes that run underneath there, and those were questions, and John Sprague will have to handle that. Uh but just fantastic news uh for our community all around through the zoning. The other one I want to give a shout out, it's International Women's Day. And I, I have a very, a very smart one in my life, and, and this board here, this council wouldn't function without Kathy and Paula and Cheryl uh making sure we do, so thank you, guys.
Making sure we behave.
We couldn't do it without.
Um all right, so uh one of the big things, uh tonight, I went before Board of Works, and I'm really excited about this, because it, it's this commitment of getting back to that normalcy, and uh I, I went with my other hat, my V C S E hat tonight, and uh we got prom scheduled for our kids, um and that'll be at the pavilion, and we're really excited about that. I mean, these are the things that we want to see happening, and you've heard us continually talk about bringing back events and seeing those again. And that really ties in too with uh the big announcement last week of the Kiwanis and the Parks Department, the Easter egg, the Community Wide Easter Egg Hunts back. I mean, that's, that's huge. That was one of the first big things that we missed out on as a community last year. Uh and to see these things coming back, I know people are excited. I know people are ready for this, and, and I know they're going to do what needs to be done to make sure that we can keep this safe, because they want these events to come back. Uh and with that means that I challenge each one of us, I want us to invite those people that are having these events. I want them to come here and talk to us at the meeting, so we can get the word out, we can make sure that, hey, what do they need to help kind of promote these things? What do they need from us? Uh and if, if people are listening online, like if you've got an event, come and talk to us about it here at City Council, because, you know, that's kind of the big three that we've been talking about. Keep the schools open, keep the businesses open, bring the events back. I mean, this is what we're about. We're getting to that point. You're seeing more and more of these announcements every day. Um and, and I mean, there's gonna be a lot of great things happening uh here in the city of Vinsons, and I just can't wait for spring, summer, and all those events that we missed last year that are gonna come and back this year. Okay, you got anything?
Couple of things real quick. I want to go back to pothole patrol that Councilman Stangle mentioned. When you report that on that website, that automatically goes to my office as well as the street department, and typically, within twenty-four hours, that pothole will be fixed. Keep in mind that if you did after hours on a Friday, it's probably not gonna get fixed on Monday morning, but typically, within twenty-four hours, no later than forty-eight, that pothole will be fixed. Um talking about the uh subdivision, the Broadway subdivision tonight, uh that is one of probably four or five housing additions that are being looked at in Vinsons. Uh I know I mentioned to you that uh I've been approached about a voluntary annexation. I've been approached by a second individual wanting voluntary annexation on property for housing development. And myself, the city attorney, and Tim Smith, the president of R D C, have been in contact with the attorneys and accountants on what process we go through to annex these properties, but also to look at housing tiffs. So it's all great news, and that's all I've got.
All right.
Yep.
Uh if nothing else, we just need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We are adjourned.
All right. Good job, guys.
See, have a good one. Thank you.